Brandywine School District Board of Education to order. Let's go to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask Ms. Stock to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the Constitution, your God, the Constitution, and justice for all.
Thank you. I will take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That'll bring us to a very special part of the meeting, special recognition. I'd like to ask Mr. Scrubot, who has represented us on the Financial Advisory Committee for many years, to recognize James Hanby for his service to our district.
I think I'm going to... Do you want to join me at the podium? We've got quite a few things to cover here. So Delaware, I say there, or in general, there are six degrees of separation. You're in Delaware and it's James Hanby. It's like one, maybe two, degrees of separation. You either know him from his travels throughout the state, his contributions to his own community, to education, to the Masons, to his political interests. He has traveled this state many times, over and over again, and has shaken many hands and met many people and has, to this point in his life, served the community better than almost anyone that I know. So we'd like to honor James as he steps down from the District Finance Committee as our chair, a position that he has held for the last seven, eight, nine, 10 years? Many, many years. So I'd like to just read some recognitions and proclamations that have come in throughout the state. And we'll start with Secretary of Education, Dr. Mark Holodeck. Dear Mr. Hanby, today, as you are celebrated for your longstanding support to the Brandywine School District, I also want to share my gratitude. Few in our communities dedicate the hours and expertise that you have. Your commitment has been both self-sacrificial and widely impactful. Your leadership on the District Finance Committee has helped the district steer through difficult financial times, as well as help give the public confidence in how their dollars are being spent. The type of work you have led rarely makes headlines, unless something goes wrong, but it's the day in, day out, that's so critical, although rarely seen or recognized. I hope today you realize that you are seen and appreciated. Thank you for supporting our students, educators, and community in such an important role. I also want to express my gratitude for the key leadership role you played in launching the Brandywine Education Foundation. I could easily go on and on, so allow me to close with a sincere thanks, my friend. All the best always, Mark A. Holodeck, Secretary of Education. And we also have... A certificate of appreciation presented to James Hanby for the countless hours and boundless energy to enhancing the Brandywine School District, embodying the essence of community service and dedication to education. Mr. Hanby notably established the Brandywine Education Foundation, a pivotal entity that has facilitated access to higher education for numerous students through scholarships, significantly benefiting both their lives and the community. Serving with distinction as Chair of the District Finance Committee, Mr. Hanby's expertise and sound judgment have been instrumental in maintaining fiscal responsibility and effectively allocating resources to support the district's objectives. His actions reflect a profound commitment to the Brandywine School District, its employees, its students, and the wider community, establishing him as a model of leadership and a cornerstone of the community. And being that the school district is a state entity, we have lots of needs financially from our local and state representatives, so it's only appropriate that we get some recognitions from them as well. This one including the House of Representatives tribute. We get hereby known to all that the House of Representatives acknowledges James Hanby, Brandywine School District, outstanding service and dedication. We proudly recognize this outstanding individual and applaud his many years of dedicated service to the Brandywine School District community. Mr. Hanby established the Brandywine Education Foundation, a beneficial organization that allows numerous Brandywine School District students to achieve higher education through scholarships. Mr. Hanby has profoundly served as the Chair of the District's Finance Committee, where his knowledge and expertise has ensured fiscal stability and successful allocation of resources to maintain the mission and goals of the district. Over the years, his steadfast support for the Brandywine School District's referendum campaigns has brought successful outcomes for securing much-needed funding for the district to aid in the maintenance of facilities, enrich programs, and enhance student experiences. We commend his remarkable contributions and commitment to the Brandywine School District. Best wishes for successful future endeavors. The House of Representatives extends its sincere congratulations and directs this tribute to be issued the 16th day of September 2024. And that's signed by Speaker of the House Valerie Longhurst, Clerk of the House Richard Puffer, and our local representative, Deb Heffernan, who was the sponsor of this recognition. And last but certainly not least, from the Senate, we get hereby known that all, that the Senate of the 152nd General Assembly joins Senator Laura V. Sturgeon and Kyle Evans-Gay in recognizing the Honorable James Hanby Sr. for his extraordinary commitment to the Brandywine School District. As the founder of the Brandywine Education Foundation, Mr. Hanby has played a vital role in the future education of numerous Brandywine students. His dedication and passion to the education arena is to be applauded. Mr. Hanby has good reason to take pride in his many accomplishments, and especially his years of commitment to the citizens of Delaware. The sponsors take pleasure in requesting tribute to an exemplary citizen of the first state and his continued dedication to the Brandywine School District. With gratitude and best wishes, the Senate directs this tribute presented Monday, the 23rd of September 2024. President Pro Tem David Sokola, Secretary of the Senate Ryan Dumphy, and then our local sponsors Laura Sturgeon and Kyle Evans-Gay. So quite a resume, and certainly you've seen James here over the years. You know, wherever the future takes you, you always are welcome here. We appreciate your knowledge and the contributions to our district. We hope you won't be a stranger. Very big shoes to fill, but I know for one, I've been inspired by your service and leadership and the example that you've set over the years. You know, it is something that, a high bar that I strive to achieve in the level of service that I've seen you run through this district. So thank you. And let me say a few words of your show of gratitude.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to the board, and Chuck is here. So we have one member of our Finance Committee is here. The Finance Committee really takes the behind-the-scenes finance work and makes it come around to what you guys need to move forward. And I've enjoyed working on the District Finance Committee, and my decision to, well, not decision to move on, is only predicated by the fact that I'm no longer living in the Brandywine School District. I haven't ventured into Colonial's meetings to see what's going on down there, but, so I can't be a member of the District Finance Committee, but I still will be active with the Brandywine Education Foundation and Brandywine Hundred, and looking forward to working with the District Finance Committee if they need assistance, and with you as well, as we move forward. We've been through, since I've been active, two referendums and a lot of work to bring, to show the light for District Finance, so that people know that they can count on the board to do what the board says it's going to do with the funds that are elected to do. So you guys are to be congratulated. Thank you.
And we'll listen to Superintendent Passer report, Dr. Wilson.
Dr. Wilson. Good evening, members of the board and members of our community. The start of our new school year was met with anticipation, excitement, and enthusiasm by students and staff alike, yet it was also met with a few challenges. We want to take a moment to express our sincere appreciation and gratitude to the BSD families who exhibited grace, patience, and understanding during the first few weeks of school, while we worked out several kinks in our systems. Please know that we operate under a continuous growth and improvement model, always reflective as to how we might better experience, better the experience for our families and the community we serve. We thank you for your support. BSD marked the solemn anniversary of September 11th with a variety of heartfelt tributes district-wide, two that I will highly quickly hear at Springer Middle School and Mount Pleasant High School. Springer Middle School hosted the Tallyville Fire Company for their 9/11 memorial stair climb. Firefighters joined Springer staff and family to climb and descend their front entrance stairs 110 times in honor of the brave FDNY firefighters who gave their lives in the line of duty on September 11th, 2001. The climb symbolized the 110 floors of the World Trade Center towers. Participants climbed in memory of the fallen heroes, ensuring that the legacy of these firefighters lives on in the hearts of future generations. Mount Pleasant High School's JROTC held a beautiful ceremony for their fellow students and staff alongside members of the Brandywine Hundred Fire Company, Delaware State Police, and the Delaware National Guard. JROTC cadets remembered the lives lost and honored the courage and sacrifice of the brave servicemen and women who answered the call 23 years ago. We'd like to thank all the community organizations and partners that made these events possible and more memorable with their presence and participation. Five BSD schools were among 13 across the state recently honored for sportsmanship by the Delaware Interscholastic Athletic Association. The Dale Farmer State Champions in Sportsmanship Award is presented annually to schools that have demonstrated a strong school community commitment to the educational nature of interscholastic athletics. Congratulations to BSD Springer Middle School, Tally Middle School, Brandywine High School, Concord High School, and Mount Pleasant High School. Congratulations to Harlan Elementary School 2024-25 Behavioral Health Professional of the Year, Ms. Sierra Carter, for publishing her first book, entitled Melanin Mel and written for ages five to 12. Her book is a story about a girl who struggles with accepting who she is because of her skin color. Ms. Carter shared, quote, "This book has been a true labor of love," unquote, and she hopes it will help teach self-love and resilience in overcoming adversity. Sierra's colleague, an art teacher at Harlan Elementary School as well, Ashley Graves, illustrated the book. So we have double famous people at Harlan Elementary School. We are excited to invite all interested families and community members to our annual district-wide high school visitation day on Sunday, October 27th, 2024. Each of our high schools will open their doors to provide students, parents, and community members an opportunity to explore their vibrant learning environments, meet our dedicated staff, and learn more about the unique programs and resources each school has to offer. Along with high school visitation, we'd like to announce our annual Choice Information Night on Monday, October 21st, at 5:00 PM, prior to our monthly board meeting at the district office. This event will provide a brief overview of all that our district has to offer, kindergarten through grade 12, but will also feature an opportunity for families to begin their online choice application alongside our team members who can assist them with any questions. Stay tuned for more information and key dates for the Choice Window of Opportunity. New this school year, we launched a campaign to improve our district's overall attendance rates, using the slogan "Four or Less = Success." This is part of a larger initiative supported by Secretary of Education Dr. Mark Holodeck to focus a keener lens on elementary school attendance, where early literacy and mathematics foundations are built. Research shows that students who attend school regularly are more likely to succeed academically, graduate on time, and build habits that lead to success in college, career, and life. Even just a few absences can add up over time, creating gaps in learning that can be hard to overcome. Chronic absenteeism is defined as missing at least 10% of days in a given school year. Students who are chronically absent are more likely to read below grade level, have lower math and reading test scores, repeat a grade, and drop out of high school. Brandywine School District is committed to ensuring that every student has the best chance to thrive in all aspects of their education journey, and that starts with being in school every day. And now for our September sizzle video.
Good morning. Good morning, guys. Good morning, good morning.
safe, and fun, for me and everyone.
President Ackerman, that concludes this month's report.
Thank you. That'll move us down to public comment. Are there any virtual speakers?
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning.
Welcome to third grade. How many friends are excited? It's wonderful, because I too
Okay. In that case, I have Mr. Bob Barry.
Could the Brandywine School District Board of Ed explain their intentions regarding
am very excited.
the 45 acres donated to the district by Capano Brothers, specifically with regard to student population?
Well, just so you know, it hasn't yet quite been donated, but it is on the way. And sitting right behind you is John Reed, our Director of Facilities, and he can give you a pretty good update of you at the moment. Thank you, sir. That'll take us down to Board Business. First report will be on the Equity Committee, Dr. Jagade.
Okay, thank you. So for the, in August meeting, the board voted to establish the Advisory and Assessment Committee on Equity. What we did thus far, the committee in and of itself has not been established yet. We're in the recruiting phase of it for membership. We did vote to establish the committee with 15 members, and so since the last board meeting, we've done a few things to begin establishing the foundation for the committee and sort of mapping out what the scope will be. I met with Dr. McKinney to, she and I began reviewing the Equity and Beyond results and sort of developing what the scope of the committee would be, seeing the work that's already done and seeing how to move forward as far as what the first steps of the committee would be. Together, myself and a few other stakeholders, we developed questions to create an interest form on Google with Dr. O'Handlon was very instrumental in helping us get that set up, get it out onto social media, the website. We sent it out to all of the schools, all of the administrators, community organizations, and the idea is that there were some really good questions listed in there, so that people can give us their perspective on experience they've had with equity, how they sort of envisioned equity within the school district, and a way of getting, helping us sort of know what their perspective is. And so people will be completing those interest forms, turning them in. The deadline for that is September 30th, which is this, wow, Friday. Well, actually, a week from today. Assistant Superintendent Kenny Rivera is going to be helping myself. He and I together will be looking at, that way we have two people who are going to be looking through all of those submissions, looking at the, there's different categories for the 15 members. So we'll be selecting people within those categories to make the recommendation to the board, and at that October meeting, the board will then vote on who those members will be. The proposed first meeting for the committee will be on October 30th, but more details will come and be publicized.
Thank you. That'll take us to the Delaware School Board Association Executive Board. We have had our first meeting of the year. Dr. Holodeck came to the meeting and he did a presentation on assessment, and specifically high school assessment. Right now, we use the SAT for every student across our entire district and across the state. Every, every public school student takes the SAT as their assessment, and I know at least, I've complained that that makes Delaware look bad, because we're comparing ourselves with 100% to other states, which are doing maybe 15% to 20% of their students. And I've actually heard people at my work, when we were in the office, say, you know, you don't want to go to a Delaware school, the SAT scores are terrible. And of course, I jump out of my chair and go into a tirade about how it's not true, but at the end of the day, you know, we, people see the numbers and they look at the numbers. And Dr. Holodeck was certainly aware of this when he was our superintendent, but now he's actually had the department put together a, I'll call it a white paper, explaining different alternatives, pros and cons to both. I don't know, Dr. Lawson, if we've had a chance to put that into Board Docs for board members to look at?
We certainly can. Mr. Rivera and I have a meeting to speak with our three high school principals, because Dr. Holodeck has asked for feedback from the superintendent, so it's still in its infancy stages.
But let's get that report out to the board, because it's, it's worth reading it, is my, my point. I mean, I think what Dr. Holodeck is recommending is, and of course, exams that will be consistent across the state. So we'll see. There's pros and cons, like I said, to every possible avenue. We did meet in a new location in Dover, the Gray Fox Grill, which is a new venue for the SBA. And that's, that is my executive board report. Ms. Stock, is there any legislative updates?
I believe the first meeting is going to be October 2nd at the Gray Fox Grill.
Thank you. Mr. Scrubot, District Finance Committee.
District Finance, District Finance Committee met on Wednesday, September 11th. Unfortunately, we did not have a quorum, so there were no actions or recommendations made by the committee at this meeting, but those in attendance did review the August 31st monthly financial report, as well as the August 1st financial position report, which will be presented this evening by Ms. Joe Florre, CFO, and the continued discussions that members of the board, or members of the committee, rather, will get together, put an idea together for how positions will be filled, given the departure of Mr. Hanby. We do have the interim chair, which I mentioned last month. Mr. Chuck Landry is the interim chair, but as we are looking at all of our committees, you know, making sure that this committee is in alignment with putting forth new members, voting structure, voting rights, and so forth, so we'll continue to work on that. And our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday... Did we move that, Jill?
We did it Saturday, Wednesday.
Yeah, because there were some conflicts. Go to the 16th? I'll follow up. It'll be posted. 16th? Yeah, Wednesday, the 16th will be our next meeting. So that still puts us off schedule for our regular meeting, but before the next board meeting. And that's all for Finance Committee.
Thank you. Health and Wellness?
There has not been a meeting since the last meeting. I believe prior to the next meeting, we'll work on our schedule for the remainder of the school year.
Maintenance Advisory?
Also no meeting. The next meeting and the first meeting of this school year will be October 8th at 6:00 PM at Concord.
Thank you. Ms. Stock, Parents and Citizens Advisory?
Yes, I am very happy to say that the Parent and Citizen Advisory Committee, although has not met, we have, we will actually have our first meeting October 17th, here, actually. Dinner will start at 5:30, and then our program for the evening will be at 6 o'clock. On the agenda, as we are going to try to clarify kind of the purpose of those who are on the Advisory Committee, to be informed, advisors for us as the board, as well as leadership, and then also for those members to also take something back to their school communities or to, or whatever community that they represent for us. And so we're going to be talking about that, as well as talking about the issue about attendance, which we know is complex, and that can often have some negative impact on their loss of learning, but then also there's certainly some considerations that we do need to consider when we're, when we're looking at that. So that is the Parent and Citizen Advisory Committee. Invite all the board members to come out. It's always a really good evening.
Thank you. Wilmington Learning Collaborative, Mr. Scrubot.
Yeah, yes, the Wilmington Learning Collaborative met on Tuesday, September 17th, at the Maurice Pritchett Academy, as well as via Zoom. Several housekeeping items. They did have some items that pushed from the prior meeting. They voted on their Chair and Vice Chair. The new Chair of the WLC is Helen Anderson, and the Vice Chair is Ajay English. They did postpone the vote for Treasurer until the October meeting. They discussed the amended budget for fiscal year '25 regarding programs and operations. Dr. Lawson, did they pass those?
Yes, yes, they did.
And then I did have to leave early, but I know they had some discussion around some service contracts for the multitude of wraparound services that WLC is trying to address. Do you have the outcomes of those? Were they all passed?
Yes, so several of the proposals were specific to the Christina School District in terms of recruiting leaders for their two schools, but there were some services that would speak to all four schools in relation to services for children inside the building.
So those four contracts were Alma Advisory Group, Jounce, Vision to Learn, and Transcend. Next meeting is scheduled for October 14th, 6:00 PM, also at Maurice Pritchett Academy, followed by November 19th and December 17th, all again, same time, same location, 6:00 PM, Maurice Pritchett Academy.
Thank you. WMPH Advisory?
No meeting and non-scheduled since last update.
Are there any additional board member reports?
I have a quick question about the WLC report. The, I don't think I realized that the WLC itself has a treasurer. That's not a staff position within the WLC staff structure. It's one of the board members as a treasurer?
Yes, I defer to Dr. Lawson. This was my first meeting as the primary.
Yeah, so the treasurer's primary role on the WLC is to work with the three fiscal agents for each of the districts, so a direct connect to Ms. Florre, to Ted Aman and Red Clay, and then Bob Vaca and Christine.
And that's a board position, not a staff position?
That's correct. It's someone serving on the council, yes.
Any additional questions? Any report? Okay. That'll take us to the Consent Agenda. I will take a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Mr. President, if I may interject for one second. On the board member reports, I was trying to search it. I couldn't get to it in time. For the gentleman that asked a question regarding Brandywine Country Club, after you talked to Mr. Reed, if you also go to our school website under Board Docs for public view, you can search past meetings under the keywords Brandywine Country Club, and it'll address some of the, you know, we've done some presentations over the years for the scope of that project and intentions. So that might be an additional resource for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Personal Monthly Report, I will take a motion to accept as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
I have a motion. I have a second?
Second.
It's one of the board members is the treasurer?
Yes, yeah, defer to Dr. Lawson, this was my first meeting as the primary.
Yeah, so the, the treasurer's primary role on the WLC is to work with the three fiscal agents for each of the districts, so a direct connect to Ms. Florre, to Ted Aman and Red Clay, and then Bob Vaca and Christine.
And that's a board position, not a staff position?
That's correct. It's someone serving on the council, yes.
Any additional questions, any report? Okay. That'll take us to the consent agenda. I will take a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Mr. President, if I may interject for one second. On the board member reports, I was trying to search it, I couldn't get to it in time. For the gentleman that asked a question regarding Brandywine Country Club, after you talk to Mr. Reed, if you also go to our school website under Board Docs for public view, you can search past meetings under the keywords Brandywine Country Club and it'll address some of the, you know, we've done some presentations over the years for the scope of that project and intentions. So that might be an additional resource for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Personal monthly report, I will take a motion to accept as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
We have state.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Scobod?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Florre?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
That's the big, that's the, uh, J.
Thank you. That'll take us to Student Matters. I'll take a motion on A, B, and C as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. That'll take us down to Old Business. We're going to start with the proclamation on Hispanic America Month in Brandywine School District. Dr. Solano?
Can you hear me? Good evening, I am Dr. Solano, the administrator of multilingual learners in Brandywine School District. Good evening, board members, member of the Brandywine School District Committee, and I'm Dr. Lawson. It is with great enthusiasm that the Brandywine School District acknowledges and celebrates Hispanic Heritage Month. Hispanic Heritage Month has a story of its own. In 1968, Congress authorized President Lyndon B. Johnson to proclaim the week of September 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Week. Then in 1988, the observance was expanded to a month-long celebration, making it the only heritage celebration that stands for a whole month. The celebration acknowledges Latinos who are known for their diverse cultures that embrace family, food, music, and dance. There are 16 Spanish-speaking countries in the world, Argentina, Chile, Cuba, the Dominican Republic, which is where I'm from, Guatemala, Nicaragua, Peru, Uruguay, Bolivia, Costa Rica, Ecuador, Honduras, Panama, Puerto Rico, Venezuela, and Spain. Delaware hosts an 8.2% population of Hispanic descent. We encourage everyone to participate in local events and educational activities that promote awareness and appreciation of Hispanic culture throughout the month. We extend gratitude to Hispanic and Latino Americans for their invaluable contribution to our society and reaching our communities with our diverse cultures and perspectives. And now I get to do this in Spanish. Buenas noches a todos. Es con gran entusiasmo que el Distrito Escolar Brandywine reconoce y celebra el mes de la herencia hispana. El mes de la herencia hispana tiene su propia historia. En 1968, el Congreso autorizó el presidente Lyndon B. Johnson a proclamar la semana del 15 de septiembre como la semana nacional de la herencia hispana. Luego, en 1988, la observación se cumplió a una celebración de un mes, convirtiéndola en una única celebración de todo un mes. La celebración reconoce a los Latinos que son conocidos por sus diversas culturas, incluyendo la familia, comida, música, y el baile. Hay 16 países que habla hispana en el mundo. Argentina, Chile, Cuba, República Dominicana, Guatemala, Nicaragua, Peru, Uruguay, Bolivia, Costa Rica, Ecuador, Honduras, Panama, Puerto Rico, Venezuela, y España. En Delaware, hay un 8.2% de personas de ascendencia hispana. Animamos a todos a participar en eventos locales y actividades educativas que promuevan el conocimiento y el aprecio de la cultura hispana. Durante todo el mes, extendemos nuestro más sincero agradecimiento a los hispanos y a latinos americanos por sus invaluables contribuciones a nuestra sociedad, enriqueciendo nuestras comunidades con sus diversas culturas y perspectivas. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That'll move us down to the revised Title IX policy. Ms. McIntyre?
Good evening, President Ackerman, Superintendent Lawson, members of the board, and all in attendance this evening, virtually and in person. I stand before you this evening to present a second read and review of the Title IX revisions. It is an update to the district's former policy and it includes sex-based information and protections for students based on gender orientation, pregnancy-related, and parenting students, and sex-based harassment.
Are there any questions for Ms. McIntyre? If not, I will take a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation that we adopt the revised policy.
I'm, I do actually have one question. It's just, I was just wondering, Ms. McIntyre, are you and, I mean, would one of you handle staff complaints and then the other person handle, I guess if you will, student?
Yes, it's structured in our district such that Dr. Yolanda McKinney will receive and address and schedule all investigations around students, and I would focus on any that are submitted regarding staff. We are both trained and can be interchangeable in those roles as needed.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I had a question too. I think I asked last time, but there's a section in here that I'm not sure if it's required or if this is the way we chose to word it, but it says that BSD may not discipline a party witness or other participant in the grievance process for making a false statement. That seems counter to what we would want in this policy. I would think that there's no repercussions for making a false accusation against someone.
So it's not that a, a person cannot receive discipline. There is, it, it is embedded within the policy that this policy does not prevent someone from getting disciplinary conduct or actions or sanctions for misconduct, such as an intentional false reporting of a matter. However, the language is structured such that someone does not have a reason not to come forward and they can feel comfortable with making a report. That report always gets investigated, which is the whole very, very specific and detailed composition of what's required in that investigation. Should the investigation yield that someone intentionally made a false report, that can be handled separately either under the Student Code of Conduct, if it's a student, or under our staff policies and provisions of board policies for staff discipline.
My, my concern is the way that this reads it. My interpretation is that that could, it specifically says BSD may not discipline a party witness or others participating in the grievance procedures for making a false statement. So I feel like this precludes us from.
So that's, that's the language of the Title IX law, but again, if they're, they can be treated separately. So if somewhat, the assumption is that the people that are going to be testifying or giving statements are going to be giving truthful statements to the best of their knowledge, when they, there's a difference if they're intentionally falsifying information, as opposed to making assertions that they believe are true that may not be true. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, I just feel like it reads that way.
Yeah.
So this might have been touched on last month as well. Is it fair to say that this is a, kind of a summary of the federal regulation or law that just in how we're administering that law? There's nothing, is there anything in here? I didn't see anything in here that would circumvent or override or be in addition, addition to the federal law. It's just the administration of how we handle Title IX.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we'll take a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation. We can have additional discussion after a motion and a second. Was that a motion, Dr. Jagan?
Oh, it's, maybe it's a.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there additional discussion on the Title IX policy?
I, I guess to Jason's concern, I understand what he's saying. Has this been reviewed by legal counsel?
I can't.
Has this been reviewed by legal counsel?
Yes, it has.
And is it, would it not be better to clarify that one paragraph by stating something about discipline action may not be taken versus the way it is, it's worded, I think the wording could be flipped because of how, because it almost seems as if this is, will not take discipline action. That's not the intent, though.
Yes, I understand where there could be some gray area. Our legal counsel did do the updates and the revisions to the policy based on what was put out by the new federal guidelines, and those are additional things. The other pieces are, are already currently in the policy and in the federal policy, but I can certainly revisit with our counsel to say that there was some concern about that language then preventing us from doing anything, just to make sure that it's very clearly articulated within the policy.
Like, just adding a statement?
Yes.
That's what you said before.
Yes.
Additional board discussion? You can bring them back to us.
I can, yes.
In the meantime, I think we should go ahead and, and vote on the recommendation because we do want to be in compliance. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional board discussion right now? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Scobod?
No.
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 Ms. Florre?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
No.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
That's D.
Okay, we'll bring it back next month and we'll try again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. That'll take us down to New Business, and the first item is our whistleblower protection policy. Dr. Jagan. Whistleblower protection.
I want to start by just giving a little bit of context, because I got like a bunch of papers here for the whistleblower protection policy. This policy, the idea of the policy came about really, I'd say, early spring, around the April timeframe, when several members on the board were receiving, there were different things within the district that were happening and several members on the board received messages or information, notifications from different people within the district who wanted to share their stories but did not quite feel comfortable sharing their stories. And so, because of fear of retaliation. And so, the board got together, I can't remember the first meeting when this happened, but I think it was like maybe April or May, when the board got together and talked about generating a whistleblower con, or policy. And so Reverend Shanika Dickerson, before she resigned, actually drafted the initial policy that is going to be the first read for tonight. Then, of course, she resigned as of June 1st. Since she submitted the first read, her documents, it was then moved from last meeting because we wanted to make sure we had all of the board members here, we received some edit recommendations from one of the attorneys. So, but because we want to present a paper trail of like each policy so that everyone on the board and people in the public can know when change recommendations were made, I'm going to be presenting a couple of different ones. So the first one I'm going to read is the whistleblower policy that was submitted by Reverend Shanika Dickerson, that's been posted on Board Docs for all of the board to review. And it says, "The Board of Education encourages and requires all employees acting in good faith to report possible suspected or actual violations of local, state, and federal laws or board policies and administrative guidelines. These guidelines shall be used to ensure that the board policy on whistleblowers protection is implemented properly in compliance with state laws. The board will verify that employees are protected from interference with reporting violations and from retaliation for having reported violation or for refusing an illegal order. To that end, it is the responsibility of an employee who is aware of conduct, conduct on the part of any board member, employee, volunteer, contractor, or agent that possibly violates local, state, or federal law, or board policy, or administrative guidelines, to report such conduct to his or her immediate supervisor, board members, and employees, immediate supervisor, excuse me, board members and employees are prohibited from retaliating against an individual who has reported a retaliation, a violation, and/or refused an illegal order, and shall not use or attempt to use their position to prevent an employee from reporting a possible violation or refusing an illegal order. If an employee becomes aware in the course of his or her employment of, this is under reporting criminal violations. If an employee becomes aware in the course of his or her employment of a possible violation of any local, state, or federal law, or board policy, or administrative guidelines, that the board has authority to correct and the employee reasonably believes that such violation is a criminal offense that is likely to cause an imminent risk of harm to persons or hazard to public health or safety, a felony, or an improper solicitation for contribution, the employee shall immediately notify his or her immediate supervisor. If the employee's immediate supervisor is not responsive, then the employee may report the possible violation to, number one, the superintendent or his or her designee. If the reported conduct relates to the superintendent, the report may be filed directly with the board vice president, or number two, the Director of Human Resources. In addition, the employee may contact the appropriate law enforcement or governmental agency responsible for enforcing laws. If the initial notification of the possible violation was done orally, the employee shall subsequently file with that supervisor or other designated district official a written report providing sufficient detail to identify and describe the possible violation. The administration shall promptly investigate the alleged violation and/or refer the matter to the appropriate law enforcement or governmental agency. Ordinarily, the decision to investigate or refer the matter should occur within 24 hours of receiving sufficient information to make a determination. When consistent with the privacy rights of employees and the objectives of any internal or external investigation, the supervisor or other district official will notify the reported employee in writing of the district's conclusions based on investigation and remedial measures taken, if any. Written notification shall be provided to the employee by the close of business on the next regular school day of receiving notification from the employee that the district is following up on the reported concern. If the district does not notify the employee of its efforts to investigate or remediate the problem by the close of business on the next regular school day, after receiving notification of the possible violation, the employee may file a written report providing sufficient detail to identify and describe the possible violation with, one, the board vice president, two, the prosecuting authority of the county or municipal corporation where the violation occurred, three, a police officer, four, the inspector general, if the violation is with the inspector, within the inspector general's jurisdiction, or five, any other appropriate public official or agency having regulatory authority over the district and the activities in which the district is engaged. Under reporting other violations, if an employee becomes aware in the course of his or her employment of a possible violation of any state or federal law, or board policy, or administrative guideline that does not involve a criminal offense or improper solicitation and is not likely to cause an imminent risk of harm to persons or hazard to public health or safety, the employee shall orally notify his or her immediate supervisor or district official as set forth above. The employee shall subsequently. shall subsequently file a written report within two days. The immediate supervisor or other district official will acknowledge receipt of the written report within five days. Such reports will be investigated within 15 days, and appropriate action will be taken, if warranted, at the conclusion of the investigation. Under duty to determine accuracy of possible violations, A, employees are encouraged to make a reasonable, good, to make a reasonable and good faith effort to determine the accuracy of any possible violations. B, an employee who knowingly makes a false report may be subject to disciplinary action, including suspension or termination. C, an employee who knowingly or recklessly gives false information or makes a false report of a violation could be liable for defamation. Under prohibition against retaliation, no, A, no employee shall be disciplined, retaliated, or discriminated against for reporting a possible violation by the district, another employee, contractor, volunteer, or other person working in or with the schools or participating in any investigation of reported illegal activity, as long as the employee does not knowingly report false information. B, for the purposes of this policy and guideline, improper disciplinary discrimination or retaliation, retaliatory action, when such action is taken as a result of the reporting and not for legitimate business purposes, includes but is not limited to the following: one, terminating or suspending the employee; two, withholding from the employee salary increases or employment benefits to which the employee is otherwise entitled; three, transferring or reassigning the employee; four, denying the employee a promotion that she or he would have otherwise received; or five, reducing the employee in pay or position. C, if disciplinary or retaliatory action is taken against an employee for reporting a possible violation of law to a governmental agency or office, including the district, the employee may file a civil action in an appropriate county circuit court for appropriate injunctive relief, damages including attorney's fees, or both, within 90 days after the date the disciplinary discriminatory or retaliatory action was taken. So that was the initial whistleblower policy submitted by Reverend Shanika Dickerson, and as it states, the purpose of, the intent of the policy is to encourage employees to report activities that they reasonably believe, you know, in good faith constitute violations without fear of retaliation. Does everyone? So now we'll open it up, with that being the first read, we'll open it up for discussion. Is that how? We're opening it up for a discussion for any additional edits, and would you, would the members of the board like me to start with the suggested edits by Mr. Stafford? Okay. So, and this policy, I should add, is based on the Delaware state policy entitled 19, chapter 17. It's Delaware Whistleblower Protection Act. But the idea was to contextualize it specifically for Brandywine School District. So Mr. Stafford, his recommendation begins the policy as such. "The Board of Education herein after," and as I, as I read this, I will actually point out differences for board members, just hopefully that'll be helpful. "The Board of Education herein after the Board encourages all employees to report known or suspected violations of state and federal laws and regulations, board policies and administrative guidelines, or procedures." And under employee rights, employees have the right to report without suffering retaliation any activity by the district, the board, or any of its employees, contractors, or volunteers, that the employee reasonably believes in good faith violates any state or federal law or regulation, or to violates board policy and/or administrative guidelines, or procedures adopted by the district. Under where to report and investigative procedures, employees have the duty to comply with all applicable laws and to assist the district in its effort to ensure legal compliance. An employee who submits a report under the policy should direct it to their directors, the district's director of human resources, or the superintendent, or if the compliant involves the superintendent, then the president of the board. So that's one difference, is they're going, it eliminates directly to their supervisor as the first whistleblower policy is stated. And then also, instead of to the president, to the vice president of the board, it states to the president of the board, when it involves the superintendent. Nothing in this policy prohibits an employee from immediately reporting information regarding possible unlawful activity to an appropriate government or law enforcement agency. When a report made pursuant to this policy is received by the district, then the following investigative procedures will be utilized. If the initial complaint, and then those two things are the same, A and B, the initial complaint made orally will then be reported subsequently within a written statement, and then B, the administration shall promptly investigate the violation or as appropriate refer it to the appropriate law enforcement agency ordinarily within 24 hours. So that is the same. At the conclusion of the investigation, consistent with the privacy rights of other employees involved and the objectives of an internal investigation, employee in writing, excuse me, investigation, the administration will notify the reporting employee in writing of the district's conclusions based on investigation. That is the same, except it does not detail the timeframe within when the, the district will get back to the employee notifying them of the, the choice to move forward. And then under protection from retaliation, it is the intent of this policy to encourage employees to report activities that they reasonably believe in good faith constitute violations of federal or state laws, or regulations, or policies, or administrative guidelines, or procedures adopted by the district. And there shall be no retaliation against an employee for any reports made pursuant to this policy. Any employee who believes they have been retaliated against in violation of this policy may file a complaint with either the district's director of human resources, or the superintendent, and again, if the board, or if it involves the superintendent with the president of the board. Any complaint of retaliation will be promptly investigated and remedial action taken when warranted. This protection from retaliation is not intended to prohibit the district from taking action, including disciplinary action in the ordinary course of business based on valid performance-related issues. And then it goes on to list, for the purposes of this policy, what retaliation includes. And it lists the same, the same four, terminating, suspending, and demoting the employee, withholding employee salary, or increases or employee benefits, and then denying the employee a promotion, or threatening the employee with any of the above. When alleging a violation of this privacy, the employee will bear the burden of proof to show that the primary basis for the action taken was a report made pursuant to this policy. And then finally, prohibition, the prohibition against false and malicious reporting includes the same two clauses about what happened. So employees making reports shall make them in reasonable good faith with accuracy, and anyone who knows or has reason to know that their report is false can receive a disciplinary action, including suspension or termination. So those are the two, the initial whistleblower policy submitted by Reverend Dickerson, and then suggested edits from Attorney Stafford. Any comments or discussion? And then I have some suggestions, but I'll wait until other board members have.
Can we, can we, for the second read, can that policy be put into a form as dictated by Policy 1.03 for board policy development? So it's kind of a format that we should follow?
Right.
The policy's purpose, and then, you know, some of the other elements that you've called out, kind of weaved into the rest of that policy. And I think that would probably go into Section 4 of the policy manual, which deals with personnel. So it would probably be the next logical, numerical, policy for Section 4. I didn't open that one up yet.
Okay.
Other, other comments?
I had two, two questions to ask. I definitely prefer the second one. One, I, I think the first one wasn't very specific to us. It even mentions, you know, there's some language, you know, that doesn't even apply to Delaware. For example, at the end in Section C, it talks about filing an action in county circuit court. We don't have county circuit courts in Delaware, so this definitely is not a BSD-targeted policy. I guess it was, you know, borrowed from somewhere else. And so I think the second one would be the one that I would be more willing to entertain, especially because our attorney's already reviewed it and made his suggestions. But then overall, I'd almost like to have a conversation about all of our employees, our state employees, and they're already covered under the federal and state whistleblower protection. So what does this give them that they don't already have without adding the complexity of an additional policy? And then my, my additional question may have already been answered since the attorney reviewed this, but I, I was under the impression that Delaware had a preemption law that prevented subordinate governing agencies from making laws that were more stringent or different than a law that already existed in the state. So I'm curious how this doesn't violate the preemption law in Delaware.
So I can address the two, simply because they were discussed at previous meetings. The first one is the reason why, the reason why the whistleblower policy was being generated within the district is not to supersede the state one, but is to put it within the local context. So I have the, I read through the Delaware Protection Act, which is, it's a general policy as well, and it addresses the whistleblower. I think it's, how hard is it? It's Title 19, Chapter 17, and it's 1702 through 08. It's the Delaware Whistleblower Protections Act. It's general, which this is based on, but it does not say specifically who, where a report should be made to. So the idea was to take a report, which we've done with other reports or policies as well. We've taken other state policies and made them more specific so that any employee would be able to look at the district policy and know where exactly to take a report, how it should be made, what the timeframe would be within, and, and still be in compliance with the state law. So that's sort of why, the reasoning that was given around why we wanted to have an additional one, to address, like the first one that was provided, it was never meant to be specific, right? It was what we had tasked Reverend Dickerson to do, the board had tasked her at the time, was to generate a template that the board could then discuss. So, so it wouldn't be contextualized. And also, I want to kind of say it, like, it's, it's not that Attorney Stafford reviewed this policy and generated what he thinks would be a replacing policy. He generated some ideas. And so I still welcome some of the thoughts from the board about things that could be in there. So this wasn't what we're intending to sort of replace what Stafford. These were some ideas that would be included as part of this discussion. And the reason that he gave around doing that sort of, because normally the attorney will look at a policy after the board has done the first and second read and had the opportunity to discuss and revise it. But in this particular case, we wanted to make sure that we were developing a policy that was clear that it was a whistleblower policy, that the intent of the policy was to protect employees from, or, you know, encourage employees to make good faith reports without having retaliation. So I did have a couple of suggestions that I think Attorney Stafford's policy does lack. When I look at the state one that I do think are important, one, I think, I think we need to ask the question about where a person, like, I think we need to be clear. There's two diff, two different things presented, and I think it's just a matter, I don't know that we have a board standard, right? Like, one says that when the report involves a superintendent, it gets reported to the board president. The other one says board vice president. So that's one question I think we need to answer. The other thing is, the, the definition that this policy gives to what retaliation is, is quite limited compared to what the state one is. And I would like us to consider going back and including the full state definition of retaliation, because it includes some information, some language around immigration as well, which I think is very important for our district. Like, we can't threaten to report someone to immigration and things like that. That's within the state whistleblower policy, but there's no mention of it in, for some reason, it's been scaled back from, from this one. And it could be because Attorney Stafford used the initial one from Reverend Dickerson. So my suggestions would be to go back, expand the, the definition. It's in, actually in 1703 that says what retaliation is. My other question is, there's a clause left out, 1705, around collective bargaining. And I wanted to try to quote that he did not include in there. It's not included in either document, and I do think that if we're going to be pulling from the state one and just contextualizing it, that we shouldn't leave out those important pieces.
Is it inappropriate to suggest, then, that maybe we do away with this entire list and just, you know, maybe simply say, for purposes of policy, retaliation is defined in state law, Section 1704? That way, if the state law changes, we don't have to keep, we don't have to continue to change the policy?
All right. So we just went through the Title IX. That's a federal law that, you know, we addressed the policy and grievance process. I mean, that's a lengthy document, but I don't know why we would look at anything different for this if there's already a state law in place. If we want to better define the process for employees on where to go, I mean, it's, seems to me that it's your direct supervisor or HR, or the board if it involves the superintendent, but I'm just, just trying to see why this, how this is any different than what we just looked at for Title IX.
You mean in, in overall?
Well, in, in, in format. If, if we have a sex-based harassment policy and grievance process, and I asked Ms. McIntyre that if the law covers everything, this is just more of a narrowed explanation of the Title IX policy, why wouldn't we take the state policy and give a little more narrowed context on what to do, where to go, how we'll handle it?
Well, I think that, I don't think it's more narrowed. I think it's actually broadened. I think we took the Title IX one, started with what was required, and then added anything for the district. So I think it's, so it's not more narrow, because we haven't taken anything away. And I think the same would be true in this case. Like, we would take, start with this state policy, and then just, what I thought it was going to be, I mean, maybe it's just me, I thought we were literally going to take what exists for the state and then just specifically say those, those questions, like, okay, instead of going to there, where do they report it? Is it to their direct supervisor? Is it to, directly to, to HR? That's literally what I thought we were going to. And then, in what case? Like, in the first one, it gives, I, I like that it says, okay, it starts by saying your direct supervisor, but then if you don't get a response within a certain amount of days, then you go to HR, or then you go to different things. So it's, it sort of has that. Either one would still be in compliance with the state, because all the state says is that someone has to report it. But it doesn't say where they have to report it, and it, nor does it say, like, how they should tier their reporting. Do they start at, like, the most immediate level, or do they go up? Stafford's definition goes straight to the director of HR. Do we want everybody going straight to the director of HR in every situation?
I think that's where the question on the negotiated contract groups comes in. I mean, there's, they already have a separate process for, you know, grievances and disputes. That would, I that would, I would think would be followed first for anything that maybe isn't covered by Title 19, Title 14, any duty to report incident that already exists.
Yeah, I feel like the one that Reverend Dickerson gave us is more of a mandatory reporting policy versus a whistleblower policy.
It's not. They're the same.
Well, the first sentence does say encourages and requires all employees.
Yeah, he, Stafford used the exact same paragraph. He just took out required. But then, later in Stafford's thing down, he says every employee has a duty. So he essentially said the same thing. Like, in underwear says where to report, he says employees have a duty to comply with all applicable laws and to assist the district in its effort to ensure legal compliance.
So, yeah, I think, I think that's necessary because educators are mandatory reporters. And so I do actually think it is necessary to say, if you got to go directly to law enforcement, go directly to law enforcement.
Yeah.
So can we?
I think they both say that. Yeah, they both say.
For next steps, can you take that back, weave it into a policy that conforms to 1.03 with some of the edits that you've talked about tonight?
Well, that's what we're, I need to hear what the edits are. I don't think we've decided that. I don't think we've made some of those decisions. Like, for example, have we, do we have a sense of where we want them to report it? Whether that's going to be straight to HR or whether that's going to be tiered? Like, I do have here, to put it in a policy format, I also have that once it's developed, it's going to go into Section 4. I have that for retaliation. Maybe instead of trying to spell it out, we just refer them to. The only thing is, we have to, if we start quoting a section number, title being, and then they change that, we still have to be reviewing this every, every time, make sure we refer it to. So is that, do we want to just refer to the state policy? Or do we want to actually spell out?
I mean, in terms,
A full definition.
In terms of offering feedback, I mean, I'm just seeing Mr. Stafford's comments for the first time this evening. So I'd like a little more time with it.
Okay. So I agree. That's why we wanted to present both side by side, so everyone has some time to reflect. Our second read is next month, right? Do we have to agree on all the edits this time? Or can we take time?
We can do that as part of the second read. And you can also circulate it, circulate edits as you put it into a form. Because I'm having trouble looking at it not being in the right format.
Because the first paragraph, I mean, it reads like a proclamation, but then it references a separate policy as if this isn't the policy, but it's
Right.
referring to a policy. And I would like the board to consider some of these timelines in here. You know, maybe some language for, you know, when reasonably possible, some of these 24-hour.
Where are you reading, John?
I'm sorry, what?
Where are you reading?
Just in general, BCD had some, within 24 hours, written reports provided. Like, the nature of some of these things might require some further investigation or further conversations. 24 hours seems kind of limiting. If there's a good faith effort to, you know, look into an issue, I don't want employees to be boxed in with 24 hours, if that doesn't allow.
I'm trying to see if that, I don't see, I was trying to see if the 24 hours was written within a state. I don't think it is. I think that was an added. Okay.
And my, my feedback is the
Right, I was looking at this.
The version from Mr. Stafford. I mean, at first glance, I'm more happy with than the other version. I don't see many changes. I would, at first glance, that I would want, but I'll read it more thoroughly. I think it's an easier read and easier for folks to understand.
Do we agree that, so we agree that we want the full definition of retaliation, though, as it comes from the state?
To say we agree sounds like a vote.
I'm asking. Oh.
We're not taking a vote on it, so I would say, I would say craft it and bring it back, and let's look at it in its entirety.
Ooh, I'm drafting.
I can help you if you'd like.
So I would think it makes sense.
Mr. Ackman, I know you referenced putting it in the format of policy. When I mentioned earlier about that, what we saw with Title IX is narrowed. It's narrowed in the sense that it doesn't change the law, but it drills down into how we are enforcing that law.
Okay.
So that's what I mean by narrowing. It's, I don't want to restate Title 19 that's already out there. And if it's just the administration of Title 19, I think that's different than us trying to create our own version of Title 19. I don't know, I'm still not clear what, we're not adding anything new to Title 19. It's just communicating to the staff where to take your issues to.
I think when we are, where we're adding timelines and we're adding people, pointing to specific people, I do think that that's important. And I can see there's a number of different places where we've done that before. Like, we even generated our own finance committee policy. And then the state said, oh, wow, we like that yours is more specific. We're going to actually use some stuff. So I do think, like, I don't think, as long as we don't change or try to supersede state policy, I don't think there's anything wrong with making things more clear. And I think, the reason why I say that is because there was clearly a need for this policy. People were reaching out and saying they did not feel that Title 19 was working clearly within the district. So we want to try to establish policies and clear policies around Title 19 within our district so that if people don't feel like it's working, we have a place to point to, right? Instead of just pointing them to the state's website. We can actually say, okay, did you take this step? Oh, shit, show me the paper trail that you have that you sent it to your supervisor or to director of HR. But if it's kind of like, even if we as a board aren't clear, just us as a board today aren't clear as to what policy or practice people should use, I can imagine that the people in the schools and then the district offices aren't clear. Should I report it to my supervisor? Well, I thought I did what I needed to do. Should I, you know, did I do it? Or do I wait? Or do I report it once if I don't hear back? So I think we, I think it benefits us. The goal is to create an environment where everyone feels like if they suspect that something is not right, that they can identify it and alert people around them without any fear that if they're wrong, they're going to be retaliated against. Or if they're right, they're going to be retaliated against them reporting it. I think, so what I will do is I will draft it, draft a policy, combining, I will take the state policy, pull that in, make it specific using Stafford's language. And anything, I think, it sounds like we are looking at Stafford. So using his language about specifically where to report and send it to the board. And that way, we've got one document that we can point to as far as any adjustments for the second read.
Perfect.
Is that good?
Any additional discussion? Okay, that will move us down to approval of the contract review between Brandywine School District and Local 3151.
Hello, I'm back. This evening, I am very pleased to present and seek approval for the contract between the Brandywine School District Board of Education and Local 3151 of the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, AFL, CIO, County of Newcastle, and the State of Delaware. The contract between the two parties expired on June 30th of 2024, and the parties came to tentative agreement on all language and salary provisions of the contract on July 17th of 2024. The items of tentative agreement are before the, between the parties are before the board for approval. And I would also like to express heartfelt appreciation and much gratitude for the members of both teams that participated in the bargaining process. For the Local 3151, the team members that I'd like to acknowledge are Christopher Ware. He was the lead negotiator, and he is the staff representative for Delaware Public Employees Council 81 of Ask Me. Chris Costelli, he's Local 3151's president here in Brandywine School District. Mr. Rodney Day, he is the vice president of the union. And Mr. Nick Scrobott, who is a member that served on their team. And for our Brandywine School District team, myself as lead negotiator, along with Ms. Leslie Armour, supervisor of human resources, Ms. Jill Florrie, the CFO, and Mr. John Reed, who is the director of maintenance and facilities, and Mr. David McNulty, senior maintenance specialist, participated for the district's team. The language and the salary items that will become part of this negotiated agreement will provide the basis for understanding of salary benefits and working conditions that will exist between the parties for the duration of the agreement. And the tentative agreement, if approved, will affect the working conditions and local salary provisions between the parties for the next three years, from July 1st, 2024, through June 30th of 2027. And then they will continue until a successor agreement replaces it. It is the superintendent's recommendation this evening that the board approve the new provisions of the agreement between the Board of Ed and Local 3151.
Well, first of all, congratulations to both teams for getting this over the finish line. It's great to see a spirit of cooperation and compromise. So I compliment both teams for getting that done.
Thank you.
Additional, additional things from the board? I'll take a motion to approve the contract.
So moved?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Additional discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
We've got it. That'll take us down to the Chief One Salary Scale Recommendation.
Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Lawson. I'm closing it out with the last three. The first one is the Chief One Salary Recommendation. This is a non-union group of individuals. And in completing the custodial negotiations that were approved by the board previously, along with maintenance, which was this evening, this would be the last group. And in concert with similar conversations, a different process. But this salary schedule passes along both the state as well as a local salary increase to the Chief One, the Chief Ones in our district.
I will take a recommendation to approve the Chief One Salary Recommendation.
So moved?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any additional board discussion? All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, on to the monthly financial report.
I was very glad that, I'll start by saying, I was very glad that Mr. Hanby said he moved out of the district because I was taking it a little personally, but he can't, he can't stay. And I didn't think I could say that, but, so thank you. And thank you for all of your time. As well as Mr. Landry, who's here tonight. As Mr. Scrobott said, we didn't have a quorum, which is why the committee is working on advertising and a process and procedure for membership. But we did review the monthly report for August. We were, the most concerning thing was early payment of taxes. We did pass a referendum. People are getting letters. They know reassessment is happening. And so we were down about $600,000 from the prior year. And the question was, will we make that up in the next month? Taxes aren't due until September 30th. But as you know, the cash flow and what our ending balance is, is very much determined by, or needs to be, is very much determined by how much we collect even in those early months. And I'm happy to report, this is news even from the committee on the 11th, was that we are now up or ahead by $2.4 million from being behind just over a half a million. So there were early payments, and that got us to, you'll see that in the next month's report, that we'll be slightly ahead of the game there. On the revenues, we were 10% versus 15.9% at this time last year. And again, that was driven by that local. And then on the state, we were very consistent, 85.8% versus 87% last year. So all in total, 57.7% revenues received. And again, but for that, that local worry that's now been made up, we were on track from the prior year. On the expenditure side, and this is an important point also, on the expenditure side, we were down for August 31st. Last year, at this time, we were at 23% expended, and this year, we're at 17.48%. Does that mean that people aren't spending? Does that mean that we're saying that we don't have money? We knew we ended with a lower ending balance, which is why we went to referendum. All of that was in place. But what we've been doing very carefully is managing a purchase order. And so instead of doing purchase, and this is across the district, instead of doing a purchase order for the entire year, we're doing it for three months because we know we don't have the funds until we get all of our taxes in. So at the 17.48%, we know our budgets are higher than they were last year as a result of the referendum. And so it's just really managing how much we're encumbering funds for three months versus 12 months at a time and doing it more conservatively because we had $3 million less and on ending balance, quite frankly. And then September 30th is also a very big day because there are a number of funds that are expiring, including ESAR. But we have been, and you'll see in the report, we have been at zero ESAR funds available now for quite some time. As we clean up the last purchase order, sometimes money will pop in, and then it will be expended from a voucher that was for the same vendor if that purchase order is no longer needed. And so that cleanup process is virtually almost done. What September, or, yeah, what September 30th is for ESAR funds is an obligation date, but then there's still liquidation time. So if there's a purchase order that we're anticipating, things will still be delivered. So the committee talked about what are the purchase orders? Still out, and they're very few and far between because we don't want to risk that if a vendor, for some reason, couldn't deliver. And John, John Reed knows, I've been talking to him about some of the larger ones on facilities, but they've completed the work, and we'll do the invoicing for that. So September 30th is a big day for the expiration of ESAR funds. And prior year, there's some extended appropriations that the state will include past June 30th to September 30th. But the committee discussed, there was no vote because we didn't have enough. But the committee discussed the report was on track for this point in the year. I will stop before I go to the next one. But the next one is very much the cash flow.
I will take a motion to accept the financial report subject to audit.
So moved?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't get it in. So August 31st revenue line for WLC, can you, it's not up there, sorry. Can you just explain what that is and there's nothing received?
Correct. We had a very significant, and I think Mr. Skrobot and Dr. Lawson might be able to speak to this too. We had a very significant amount of funds last year from the WLC that were continued. So they didn't have a June 30th ending date, and so there is still a balance in the FY24 funds. I think the WLC is working on the FY25 budget and what they're submitting. The state has allocated that amount in the state budget, but in order to receive it, the WLC has to submit their plans to the state, and then they'll transfer the money. And they transfer it in two parts. Some of it goes directly to the WLC, some of it is passed through and comes to the school district. So of that $20 million, the school districts don't receive all of it. They just receive the parts that would flow through a school district such that there was, let's say there was a stipend for staff or there were different plans. We actually have a meeting tomorrow with all three districts, and Mr. Heller had asked, there's a treasurer at the board level, but there's also a finance person who is a staff person. And all three districts have a meeting with her tomorrow to talk about that very thing. But it's anticipated that the 24 funds will continue, and, well, we know it's in the state budget because they continued them, but then there will be an additional allocation. The reason why it's zero is because they haven't submitted the plan, the plan hasn't been approved, and it hasn't come to us yet. That's why it's zero.
Thank you.
So I can report that we voted on a budget at Tuesday's meeting, and it was an amended budget. And we got word on Friday from Dr. Burgis that it went through several steps at the Department of Education. I think it has to go through a lot of, both at the district level and at the state level, several layers before it gets approved.
Thank you.
I know there was some discussion on expanded minor cap being encumbered, not expended before, was it the expanded minor cap or?
Enhanced minor cap. There was, we talked about, in terms of making recommendations for next budget cycle, the chiefs are in the process of developing their recommendations. I'm sure DSBA is in the process of making their recommendations for both legislative as, does DSBA make a budget request or just a legislative request?
We have legislative priorities, which is what's gonna be worked on.
Okay. And sometimes they include budget items, and so the chiefs go through that process and the CFOs typically provide input. One of the things we talked about is, for us as well as smaller districts, right now there's a restriction that you have to obligate, not spend, but obligate, meaning encumber, you know, do your promissory POs, but obligate all of your funds before you can touch the enhanced minor cap. But it prevents you from combining the two together. And so there are a lot of districts that are saying, including us, that are saying that's unnecessary to require that the one, the first has to be fully expended before you go to the second because you have such a short window to use your minor cap funds because you're usually using them when the students aren't in the building, when you can actually do the work. And so it prevents you from combining the funds together. So there was talk at the committee about requesting, it's in the bond bill, but requesting that requirement be removed in the future should minor cap funds be budgeted by the bond committee.
Thank you.
But it is, it is in place right now, so we have to encumber first.
Any additional discussion? Financial position report?
So the financial position report, it's, it always throws people a little bit for a loop because it says July 1st, 2024. It's due to the state on August 31st, 2024, and it's our statement of cash and cash flow going into the receipt of taxes. They set the date as October 15th, meaning what do you project your ending balance is gonna be on October 15th? For us, that means there's one more pay after October 15th, local pay. So interestingly enough, it says what's your one month, but after October 15th, there's only one additional pay. So you really would need half. Now, there's some October months where there's three pays in a month, so that can, cash flow can always depend on when does that, when does that cycle happen as well. But this was based on, this was a conservative estimate based on what was known at the time, meaning we hadn't received those taxes in the early months. And it still shows that we would have enough available to make payroll. It was close because our balance was only 6.6 million. The finance committee has set that target to be 8.8 million. Now, that, it's a perfect example of how you can see that that changes, that if you get two extra million in taxes early, then 6.6 million is okay, but you can't count on that, right? You can look at history and, but certainly during a year coming into reassessment, it wasn't, I wasn't gonna make an aggressive estimate that we would receive more, especially after a referendum, that we would be higher. But now we have the September data that goes into that as well. So our balance as of October 15th will probably be higher than 3.9 million. But this, the entire purpose of this report is to see if a district is in trouble, quite frankly, if they're not gonna make payroll because there are certain things that have to happen if that red flag goes up, which would be, there's different mechanisms, but we would have to alert the state. And so this report and projection show that, no, based on, and again, based on our conservative three-month purchase order and limits in that regard, we are on track to make it through and then we'll receive the taxes as well as the new referendum Part 1 funds for the year to be on track revenue-wise. But I'll come back because I do this report three times a year.
Any questions on the financial position report? If not, I'll take a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept the report. Is there any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. That'll move us to general information. Our meeting in October will be October 21st. The November meeting will be on the 18th, and December will be even a little bit earlier on the 16th. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Yay.